All right, I am calling the City of Palm Valley Regular Meeting. It's Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, 6:00 p.m. Invocation, who would like to do this on invocation?
I will. Okay. Father God, I just thank you for this opportunity to meet as a city and discern the Lord's guidance in all of our decisions and give us wisdom from Jesus' name.
Anytime. Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, my nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call in form.
Scott Nelson, present.
Mike Vargas, present.
And Nancy, for president.
Michael Gorges, present.
Mr. Nelson, present.
And Michael O'Leary, present.
Ms. Spindal is very sick, ma'am, so she's not here, is my understanding.
What was that?
Ms. America Spindal, she's not here because she's sick.
Okay. Not a problem. We have forum, and next item, public comments.
Here we have two. First, we have Ms. Carla Vanda. And you are welcome to the podium. Um, it's okay.
It's okay.
It just got real.
It's not real.
I'm sorry, is the microphone on or is the green light on?
It's pretty good.
Okay, there. So I serve on the Parks and Rec Committee, and I have been informed recently that two of the members have resigned. Mrs. America Gonzalez and Sylvia, I don't know her last name, but they've both resigned, so that leaves me and Mr. Elmer. I volunteered Daisy Banda because she lives in our community, and I figured that she could help us. I don't know how many other members we need to be part of the committee, but we are desperate.
There's three beds.
There's two seats available.
Mm-hmm. So that's why I'm here today.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
And then we have Miss Daisy Banda.
Banda?
Six, seven. That's us. Jordan.
Hello, I'm Daisy. I've been volunteered.
Volunteer.
I've been in Palm Valley since 2017, so I don't, actually would like to be a volunteer. I would like to, you know, just be part of the community, get to know new people. So, do you all need anybody? I am here. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to item number one, proclamation to designate the week of May 18th, 2024, sorry, 18th through the 24th of 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS Week. And so I'm going to read that proclamation. The EMS Week proclamation, to designate the week of May 18th through 24th of the year 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS Week. Whereas emergency medical services, a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative maintenance, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Michael O'Leary, Mayor of Palm Valley, Texas, on this 20th day of May 2025, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th of the year 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 51st anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, We Care for Everyone. I encourage the community to observe this week and appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in honor of EMS profession and the essential services it provides.
So if I may for a second, that, this was my request, so thank you for that.
No.
As a paramedic for 36 years now, I've been, I've been around for a while, and I, I get the opportunity to engage with a lot of the folks who are still in the field. So I'm, I'm out of the field, I haven't worked on an ambulance in years, but I still teach it, I still engage in it at the hospital, and was hoping we'd have some, some folks from STEC here. But this is an opportunity for us as the citizens to learn something, learn some CPR, learn some first aid. Thursday is Stop the Bleed Day, National Stop the Bleed Day. There's opportunities everywhere to, to learn more about it, to engage with the community and help your fellow man. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Well, that's why we do need a partner for this thing.
Yeah, we sure do.
There we go.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Number two, oath of office. Are you guys here? You gonna approve it? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we need to have a motion to approve that one.
Oh, a motion to, oh, sorry, I'm making a motion.
Motion to approve the proclamation. And a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries, so proclamation is approved. Thank you again. Okay, now, number two, oath of office, administration of the oath of office, the elected officials, it's myself, Mike Vargas, and Scott Nelson.
Okay.
There we go.
You want me first? Mayor first?
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
You don't?
You mayor. I think you're pulling those, right?
Okay. I, I asked Connie, I gave Connie my phone to figure, take pictures, but I told her, my wife's phone don't answer. Okay, so just take your phone, raise your right hand. We have to be aye, Michael O'Leary.
Aye.
To solemnly swear, or affirm, that I have not directly, or indirectly, paid, offered, paid, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute, any money, or thing of value, or promised any public office, or employment, for the giving or withholding, of a vote, at the election, that I was elected, or the reward, to secure my appointment, or confirmation, whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, that's one, sir.
Okay?
I have that one. Now that's, that's two, the, for him. Okay, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Michael O'Leary.
Michael O'Leary.
To solemnly swear or affirm, that I will faithfully execute, the duties of the office, the city of Palm Valley, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend, the Constitution, and laws of the United States, and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations, Mayor. We gotta sign this, I think. And my friend is as bad as my cursive, so.
I guess I'll drop her a line.
Yeah, I know that. And I think he's the only one that signed the paper off, and.
I'm just showing that in the picture now. All right. You're official.
Congratulations.
Thank you, John.
Is that the only one?
Nope.
No, two more.
Let's see, Mr. Varga, let me see this one, and this one.
Thank you, sir. Do the statement first. I want to say the aye, and if you have the aye, you can state your name, little. Raise your right hand, sir. Aye.
Aye.
To solemnly swear or affirm, that I have not, or indirectly, paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute, any money or thing of value, or promised, any office, or employment, for the giving or withholding, of a vote, at the election, which I was elected, or the reward, to secure my appointment, or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God. Okay, that is the statement of office, and I think it makes really good of them, but here we go. We have for me?
Aye.
Aye.
To solemnly swear or affirm, that I will faithfully execute, the duties of the office, the city of Palm Valley, the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, and the laws of the United States, and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations, sir. All right, now I want to get to sign this one here.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm. You're official, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more, one more.
One more.
Somebody's, somebody's got to bring up.
Everybody in the day.
Let me just get it all done at once.
Good, we're going to cover the papers. Nothing very too advanced, we have to have a meeting. Aye.
Aye.
To solemnly swear or affirm, that I have not directly, or indirectly, paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute, any money or thing of value, or promised any public office, or employment, for the giving or withholding, of a vote, at the election, which I was elected, or the reward, to secure, my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God. Okay, we got that one out of the way, sir. Now we're going to put the end. Raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
To solemnly swear, or affirm, that I have faithfully executed, the duties of the office, of the city of Palm Valley, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend, the Constitution, and the laws of the United States, and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations, sir.
Okay. I make two.
All right.
No, you're fine.
Did one of them.
Yeah.
Go for it, you got something.
Kick me out, just push me. You won't be able to stop.
Thank God, thank God we don't have to do paperwork.
Yeah. Amen to that.
Okay, so, all right, are we good to go, move on? All right, number three, minutes. I'm recommending this one be tabled. Staff has been tied up with the enterprise system and getting everything up to date, so we're going to push that on to the next meeting. I just need a motion to set it aside.
Make a motion to table the minutes, maybe on April 15th, 2025, until the next meeting.
Okay, have a motion to table, have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Awesome, we're going to push that on to the next meeting. Number four, drainage project, update on drainage project completion. Have the city administrator and engineer, Tony, how much you got for us?
Evening. We met with the contractor last week, he pretty much gave him an ultimatum. This is the last day, you guys can work on the project, after that we'll pursue other avenues to get the project completed. So they have till the end of the month, I gave them till May 30th to complete the project, and any pending items on the punch list. Right now, the main, the bulk of the project is the golf course, so they're grading, final grading and hydro seeding. I checked this morning, and they hydro seeded up to the south cart path by the restrooms, and they're finalizing grading, everything at the fairway area, everything south of the cart path, and just north of that final cart path before you hit Palm Valley Drive South. Further schedule, they gave me a schedule, they should have hydro mulch this evening, if everything looked fine with the country club. And if not, they would hydro mulch tomorrow morning. And the rest of the week's going to be basically putting back spring systems, online, connecting cables, putting sprinkler heads back on, and getting everything touched up. So the goal is to finish that by the 30th. Other big items that they need to complete before they head out, it's going to be cleaning Drainage District 5, Drainage Pond, accidentally, not accidentally, they dumped some of these spoils from our project into the pond, mistaking that they should have left it somewhere else, or pushed it toward the low side of the pond, so you got to get that cleaned up. We want to get that cleared up before end of the month, because next month is hurricane season. And same thing is with Mr. Youngblood's property, you need to get that cleared up before you leave on the 30th. The only thing that will be delayed is the gate valve that gets put on the lake, they had an eight-week delay on it. There's some issues with the distributor, contractor between distributors, some miscommunication, and something happened where the distributor didn't order the gate, so now there's an eight-week lead time on the gate. That's the only thing that'll be pending on this project when we're done. They checked the 24-inch RCP pipe that's underneath Bougainvillea Road, where we thought there was some type of break, where water would come in and start pushing up and forcing the, the ground, or removing the dirt, displacing it. After checking the pipe, they sent me some pictures, I went out there, there was no visible breaks, nothing was wrong with it, so we backfilled it and put it back to how it was before. We'll keep it on it if we see any type of sinking like we saw over there on Bougainvillea and Palm Valley Drive West, but as of now, it looks like the pipe is, it's, it's fine, from what we see.
Any questions for Tony?
I spoke with the representative from the club, and they said that the hydro mulch was put in.
May 2nd. I'm unclear how, what exactly the location of that hydro mulch from that date is, but they were told at that time that growth should appear within two weeks, and that we're now at basically the three-week date, and that that hasn't really occurred. So apparently, Mr. Crockett was dealing with that somehow, but apparently there's some concern that the seed isn't taking. Have you had any conversation with the, whoever's responsible for that regarding to that item? So I'm passing along to you, because I think there's some concern that the hydro mulch is not taking.
Understood.
Are they watering it? Do you have to water it?
Yes, so we have a pay item to water the hydro mulch, to make sure it takes, they actually dammed up the water inside the ditch up by the south cart path going towards Palm Valley Drive South, so they dammed that up, let the water build up, and have a little boat with the pump, and they run that boat along the ditch, spraying the water up the slope. So they're taking advantage of the water they have.
Our seed, our seed of water.
Yep.
My second question is in regards to the gate, how big is the gate?
18-inch gate, sir. 18-inch slide gates will be 18-inch nominal size, but once you've measured it out, it's probably about 22 inches by 22 inches, and it's going to be about, the stem will go about a foot and a half above the box, the inlet that's going to be stored in.
So it's connected to a pipe, correct?
Correct.
And the pipe is connected to the lake, is that right?
Yes, right.
What is the relative sediment level of that lake relative to that pipe?
We're going to clear around it, and then slope back up, so there's no sediment in the pipe. The goal is, of course, when we have more monies, future projects will be to dredge that lake, get it back to a lower level, so you get more stormwater storage during rain events.
Is this a, is this piece at the request of the Drainage District, the gate?
Uh, no.
Okay, so that's a city project, I just wanted, I'm just trying to figure out what's what.
Actually, Mr. Jerry Wade asked for it.
Okay.
Yep.
To replace that, because it wasn't working.
Well, there was, the way the lake works now, there is no pipe going from the lake to the.
Oh, to the ditch.
To the inlet, correct.
Which would be counterproductive.
Right, so what it does, the water builds up in the lake, goes down the concrete flume, which is essentially a sidewalk, goes into a grade inlet, and then that grade inlet goes to the ditch. So the water flow at the, at the lake has to get a certain height before it spills over into the grade inlet, going through the ditch. So there's no direct connection right now.
So this will allow for direct connection for water to go directly in?
Correct, so time comes in, you open up the gate, water goes through directly to the ditch.
All right, thank you.
And what about, were, who is going to be responsible for the gate, are the little fence that were on Bougainvillea, or tech people from?
Oh, from Bougainvillea? Okay, so Bougainvillea, we're going to try to get the contractor to trade us for liquidated damages. So we're going to, I already, I already brought this up to them, like, hey, look, some of the liquidated damages, what we can do is, you give us labor and material, and a price to install that decorative fence, I'm calling it decorative fencing, but it's like a four-foot, five-foot.
Little barb.
Right, aluminum fence that go around the concrete ditch top, and it'll go around that hole area. I'll mark it up for them, I haven't yet, but I think they're working to get some quotes from me, and that's one of the things we're going to look into for trading liquidated damages, so enough to cut the city a check for the full amount.
Yeah, it's important, because when it flooded, you couldn't even see where the street was, or the ditch began or ended, so.
Would it hold, I mean, would it prevent a car from going in there, though? Or is it just more a psych thing?
No, but it's going to be, it's more of a psych thing. Right. And then on Palm Valley Drive South, I talked to the Drainage District, hopefully they put some type of gate there, barrier, so no one goes into the golf course off Palm Valley Drive South. So that's going to be a project for the Drainage District to get solved.
There is already a plan also to put posts and cable wire along the ditch on the interior. Is the contractor placing, putting that in? So that's going to be done as a project afterwards?
I believe the country club is taking care of that, we're not.
Yeah, they worked, I guess they worked it out with the Drainage District, but I didn't know if.
No, no, no. So, yeah, we're just giving them the opportunity to trade liquidated damages, and the thing we, we need is having that fence along Bougainvillea.
The, the one that's going along the ditch, I just want everybody to be clear on this, that's not our project, that's being paid through the country club.
No, that.
I don't want anybody to get confused on that, so.
Yeah, I know that they'd already worked that out somehow, but I just didn't know if it was that, if it was now or later. Yeah, okay.
All right, so. Any questions for Tony?
Tony, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
At Palm Valley Drive South, you know, we get that, we have that, I think, is it going to be addressed, you know, that two-inch, or, or, you know, that, that fault that we've got, you know, where the concrete meets the asphalt?
Oh, on the road.
Yes, I think they, they.
They grinded it down?
Yes.
I guess if you could, let me know if that works for you guys, if not, we can have them rework it.
I think, I think it needs to be addressed, because it's just not, it's just.
It's a speed bump.
It is.
Stop.
Yeah, we can.
My daughter is driving, almost fell out of the car. That's exactly what I told him, I said, you know, in a car, you know, it's no big deal, but when you go on a golf cart, everything.
Or a bike.
If you go in a car, that's the gun.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you, Tony.
Understood, yes, sir. So we are giving them to the 30th, after that, if we don't hit all our marks, we'll have to pursue another way to get this thing finished.
But we haven't paid the last, last payment, right? We still owe.
We still. Yep, and we still have the retainage, it should be about a little less than $100,000. So we do have means to finish the project, and then if worse comes to worse, we go after the bond. Only problem with that is typically a two-year process, so maybe we can work something out so they can finish it out, and no one wants to go through that route, and they told me they want to finish this out, they'll be inadmissible about it, they're not being severe or aggressive, I mean, we met with them, they seem to understand the situation.
Yeah, myself, Randy, and Tony, and David Flynn actually sat in the meeting, and we let them know where we stood on this, so they don't want, it's, it's a blemish on their record.
Right.
So they're going to want to make us as happy as possible before they move on, so.
Right.
They're, they're going to cooperate, one way or another.
And then, of course, we're holding whatever's left of the money at this point, so they won't get paid, or won't see the retainage, so we're 100% satisfied. And also Texas Water and Board, because I had to bring them out here to check the site, do a final walkthrough with them.
How much retainage do you have, again?
A little bit less than 100.
Because if I do the arithmetic to your close date of the end of the month, that's going to put a total liquidated damages number right at 120,000. So you would trade some of that? Would some of that come out, how would that process work? I'm just using that off of your number, you, you put in your email dated the 8th of May.
Yes.
111-5.
Right.
Well, there's another.
Correct, right, so it's a lot of.
Two days in the month, so it's going to be a little over 100, probably about $122,000. So you'll start doing the arithmetic against that and the retainage, is that how you would do that?
No, the retainage is separate from the contract, that's something they need to, need to pay upfront, or they'll find a way to, they're going to negotiate with us, I'll be honest, they'll try to find a way, and say, hey, we're late for this reason, or hey, this happened, or hey, you know, we have rain days on this day, it didn't count these days, and we'll go back and forth on that, but that'll be a separate issue. But we will hold retainage until Texas Water and Board clears this as well, I think that'd be a good thing to do, they'll hold that 5% of the total property cost.
And that inspection is back in June, or?
As soon as they finish, I need to get with them, see when they're available to come by. Usually, I had did with one with them before, and it was pretty simple, they kind of just walked aside, see what we did, and that's pretty much it, it was pretty simple. If they see something they didn't like, they mention it, but normally, the project's pretty much done, and they're happy with it. It should be a smooth process.
And they still got to clean up the detention pond, the concrete, all that stuff that's out there?
Yes, so they have been cleaning the, the actual drainage, our drainage canal?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, sorry, you're talking about District 5, yes, they do need to clean it up. I went out there Monday, and I still saw some of the earthwork there, I think Charlie's going to do that, my only concern is Charlie's focusing on the golf course, Crockett is, I'm not sure he'll have time to jump into that detention pond, but he needs to, he needs to get that cleaned up, especially with hurricane season coming up, we don't want a tropical storm or something coming at us, and that still has earth in it.
Yeah, that and all the construction material, and all the dirt and rock that's in the actual ditch itself.
Yes, and that's been mostly cleaned out, I think they still need to do a little more on it, I'll do another lap and look through it, but I saw them doing that Monday, when I went out there as well, so they have been cleaning, actively cleaning it.
Okay. There's no more gar in there, is there?
There's still might be, I mean.
Yeah, no alligators, just, just alligator gar.
See if we get one.
Yeah, that was crazy. All right, I've got nothing else, anybody else?
I had a few little fish that we were.
There you go. All right, nothing else for Tony?
Thank you, John.
All right, thank you, John, thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, number five, variance request, consideration and possible action on the variance requests made by Jonathan Talbot Wise, I hope I'm saying that right, regarding the fence line at 5117 Rico Circle Harnge, Texas, 78552. Ms. Rendine.
So council, on May 7th, a fence permit application was submitted by Mr. Wise, who is under contract to buy this property. Our building inspector reviewed the application, and he denied the application, stating that it would not maintain the 25-foot rear yard setback measured to the property line. So the owner was advised that if they wanted to do this, they would have to come to the board for a approval, or a variance application and approval, so that's what's before you today. Mr. Wise himself could not be here, so he has sent a representative, Mr. Herman Gonzalez, to answer any questions or to speak to the, to the request.
So I was contacting Mr. Wise, and he asked me if I could help him out with the project. I did the fence, the first one, and it was approved by you guys when I built the first one on that property. This fence actually goes all the way, if I take off the piece that you see there, it's going to. This fence actually goes all the way, if I take off the piece that you see there, it's gonna hook up with the other fence that's on the other house that's right next to it. And it's all gonna be metal fence, so you can be able to see through it, and it's gonna have, uh, fence posts, uh, two by two by four feet high. So it's not gonna obstruct the, uh, the golf course or anything, you can still see through it. Um, and it's not, there's other, other properties around there, the fifty-one-twenty-four Grande Circle, and there's fifty-two-twenty-five, um, Rico Circle also has, uh, a fence also obstructing to the, to the golf course, so it's not gonna do, in that area, it's not gonna really obstruct or, or, or look bad. That's why he's trying to do it.
So can you help me understand the, you said it's a metal fence, is it?
Yeah, it's a metal, posts, yeah.
How far apart are they?
Um, they're gonna be, they're like six inches, you know, and then, and then, and then the...
Your block, I'm only gonna put like four block, two by twos by four feet high, attach the fence to that, the metal fence.
Okay.
So it's not gonna really obstruct anything, or, and it's already has, you know, the, the finish of the other fence coming to it anyway, so... Not really gonna do anything.
What are you giving us, this right along the golf course? So I drove over there before, uh, coming over tonight. So I'm trying to get a sense of this, this is our packet, okay? Now, the existing, there, this existing survey line, which says a hundred and sixty-three point five eight feet, thank you.
And we'll turn this on.
This is a lot better picture. So this survey line here, that says one sixty-three fifty-eight. The existing fence on the next-door neighbors, which is listed as Lot Fifty-nine here.
Right, right.
Ends where your posts are suggested to start, correct?
Right.
Now, you're wanting to go up to the corner?
Yes, and then come back in.
How long is that from those, how long is that section of fence?
Uh, it's good, maybe about...
Ninety-two.
It's not, maybe twenty feet, maybe, twenty feet. Attached to the other one, 'cause you're gonna go out to the straight, and then you're gonna come back in to attach to that one.
When you say attached to the other one...
What is the other one?
Uh, it's gonna be a plastic, uh, that, plastic one that she has right there on the corner.
Who is she?
Uh, the neighbor to the east side, I, I, I don't know her name.
Okay, so...
If I was there, if I was looking at their house...
We're just, we're saying the neighbor to the...
Right.
I thought that was Tommy and Keith's old house.
This is, no, that's, that was, that was, um, yeah, Tom?
This is Tom Mason's house.
Tom Mason's house, and then the one next door was, were furnished to live on.
Okay, all right.
To the right.
Okay.
And they actually have a metal fence also, coming all the way across.
Okay, so there's a fence along this survey line, going back to the one sixty-three fifty-eight. It ends where you wanna add the posts, did I get that right?
That's true.
So Fern's fence turns right there, is that correct? So you're wanting to actually create an elbow off of Fern's fence out and over?
Just a little elbow, not very much.
Well, well, how much is gonna be left of the setback after you build it?
No, it's gonna be built on the, right on the setback.
So it's gonna build on the setback line?
On the setback.
So this fence right here is gonna be at twenty-five feet?
Yes, should be, should be connected to that little area, that's why I'm asking for the variance, so that we can accomplish that.
You're asking for the variance to connect?
To connect, yeah, so we can go further that way.
Okay. That's my question, if it, if it was on the setback. 'Cause this leads to my next...
Here's a new ordinance that you guys passed, that's why, on the golf course, that's why we're, that's why I'm, that's why it's like that.
Are, are you on the property boundary or on the setback?
On the setback.
Maybe just the way that your friend looked, and it was over the setback, and it was on the setback.
But it does show that it's still lined up. Yeah.
The...
It's not, it's not gonna obstruct anything, in other words, it's non...
I wanted, I did not have time to go back and look at it.
That's okay.
It was the very first meeting after I...
Counsel, last year, last June, and it was also on Rico Circle, was, I don't, was it this?
It was someone trying to buy Fern's house.
So that was Fern's house next door. And so that's where I get confused, how they wanted to move to, they wanted to move past their setback.
They wanted to reach the setback, 'cause they're too close, they're too close to this.
Yeah, and there just wasn't room, so people just didn't buy the house.
Right, but, so... On this survey that was in our packet, behind this next survey line, which says ninety-one point ninety-two feet, on this one, it says Lot Seventy-two, what is that Lot Seventy-two on our packet? Is that another piece of private property, or is that the golf course? That's where I got confused.
Yeah, that's part of, that's a little bit of the golf course that we're going in, not, but, 'cause we gotta catch up to the other fence, so we're just trying to make the little turn to get to, join to that one. I'm gonna take off the other two, the demo this part, and just come back out, and if you've noticed, the line, it's coming across, but then you have, it's coming up on the other side, and I'm just gonna add that little piece, just so that I can cover that with metal.
So... Is this, is this the boundary line, my question is, is this the boundary line of their property? Right now, and the setback is right here?
Yes.
So they've actually encroached it?
Yes.
By how much?
Two feet deep.
Right, so that's...
And that was approved when I first did the fence, in fact, it was maybe ten years ago.
Because it was only a couple feet, so variance was provided. Okay, so now you need a variance for this connection, is that what you're telling me?
And then I'm gonna make the turn going in, yeah.
And you're gonna connect to their fence here? And so, and I see where the setback, and it is gonna be on the setback line.
Yes.
And I'm thinking that they, these people wanted more fence on Fern's, that's why we denied it.
And that's why they applied for it.
Yeah, they wanted to get close to the, oh, this is right there, yeah, the, I guess a hooker's pit that's golfing each other's. Just left and short of the green, where that tree is.
Yes.
That's my house, dude.
That's this cor, that's that, that's that corner by, uh...
That's Attorney Leo.
And actually, it actually, it turns in, and there's, the golf course sort of is away from those areas.
Right, Jim Bradley's house is over here.
Yeah.
And so it's kind of a known...
Yes, nobody's around there.
Well, you're not actually asking for anything off, off of the setback line, other than a connection, I got denied in the first place.
Is the, is the line, is that maybe what it was, when you looked?
I don't know, or it may have been the way that it was written for the connection, but...
Well, the golf course, excuse me, has been a very hot topic, so he probably made the decision, yeah, put it on caution.
Air, air and a side of caution.
So, so I don't, I mean, I don't mind, this doesn't give me any hurt, Vern.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the survey.
I have a lot worse heart, Vern, I'm nineteen.
I guess the official request is a variance? Mary, it, or, sorry, administrator, so...
Yes, so it would be, the motion would be to approve the variance request.
Okay, and the address is?
Uh, fifty-one seventeen Rico Circle.
Fifty-one seventeen? Uh, I move that we approve a variance for the fence as described at fifty-one seventeen Rico Circle.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for answering the question.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
Number six, financial report, discussion on monthly financial report and overall financial status reports. City Administrator Rendee, what you got?
So, um, I, um, I provided for you the current income and expense report, and the current income expense report for the water, and the first ones for the city operating fund. I also provided for you the twenty-two, twenty-three income expense report for each, uh, fund for water and city. Um, the audit documents, everything is current from, uh, from, of all of the accounts up to September of twenty-twenty-three, and has been submitted to the auditors, and they are reviewing it, and we started doing our polls for the, the checks, um, and receipts and things, um, their, their checklist for supporting documents, uh, today, and so they sent us the list last night. So, um, Ms. Sosa has been working, um, pulling the, the supporting documents for, for that, and, um, I have, uh, reconciled all of the accounts through September thirtieth, some of the, the less, uh, active accounts are through to date. Uh, for September thirtieth, in the city operating account, we reconciled within three cents. So, um, I decided you guys didn't wanna pay me to sit there and look for three cents, and, um...
I'm impressed.
And, um, the water operating account wasn't quite as good, we were within fifty-eight dollars, but again, um, I'm just gonna chalk that up to, um, it had to be off when I started, it's obviously not our fault, so, yeah. But, um, but yeah, everything went down pretty smoothly, like I said, everything's updated to the auditors, and, um, you can, uh, the, the current income expense report, you know, again, it's, it's not fully updated, 'cause Connie and I are still trying to make sure we have the systems in place to get everything inputted, but it's getting closer. You also have the check listings for everything that was, um, all the checks that were written for this past, uh, thirty days. And, um, if my calculations are correct, let me get to my notes page here. So I did some studying and some number crunching from our audit from twenty-twenty-two, so with our ending calculations from our audit to where the balance, uh, statement is now, and it looks like our expenses went up about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but our income went up about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So, looks like we are doing, um, good, we have more income coming in than, um, going out, which we'll just have to, um, adjust accordingly wherever you guys have the reserves. I don't know if we do it by ordinance, or if we have a separate fund designated for the operating expenses, but, um, since we're talking twenty-two, twenty-three, we'll just wait till we get everything caught up and do, um, that adjustment in one, in one swoop. So we have enough operating expenses for ninety days, so, um, anyone... So the operating expenses for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three fiscal year, um, for ninety days would have been about two-hundred-and-ninety thousand, uh, that we would have had to have, that's, uh, marked restricted, so that way we can't use it. If the, the twenty-two, uh, general fund, I think the general fund balance was about six-hundred thousand, so it means it had about three-hundred thousand in just city, this isn't water, this is just city, um, that would be unrestricted. So, um, as of twenty, as of these numbers, if, if I've got everything right, and like I said, the auditors are looking at it, we were sitting pretty healthy as of the end of twenty-twenty-three still, so, um...
Do they have a timeline for when they're gonna complete the audit for twenty-two, twenty-three?
They are doing ASAP, they started working on it about two days after I submitted everything, so, um, I, they haven't given me an exact, uh, timeline, some of it. You know, when I asked for the exact timeline, they said, well, it depends on how fast you guys get the documents back to us, so it's, you know, it's always a moving, a moving target, but, but they know, um, you know, they know the, the situation, so, a, a...
Are you gonna be prepared to roll into the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four audit?
We're already, yeah, I'm already working on those bank statements, and I, I hope to have those submitted to the auditors, and, um, in, in a perfect world, we'd at least have the auditors here in, in the June meeting to report the twenty-two, twenty-three audit, but I don't wanna overshoot for them, but, um, as far as our end goes, it, uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four documents should be uploaded, because like I said, I'm, I only have the operating accounts that I need to get through the rest of the year, and I'm, I'm already working on those.
Well, I think for you and the mayor, and ultimately us, when we have our budget summit, having audits through twenty-four of last year will make our job a lot easier. Oh, yeah, correct.
Right.
So, and I think we've got enough time, I think you guys have done a wonderful job wrapping your arms around it, especially considering we had a natural disaster in the middle of all of that.
Small.
Just a small one. Um, my, my, uh, last question is, on the income statement, uh, for the current year, uh, there's nothing on the income side listing, uh, property tax collection, you just have our other ancillary fees on, on the financial report? I know you kinda move as you go, so I don't know how you're booking that income. So just property taxes isn't showing up on the, just your running trial balance income statement, starting October of twenty-four.
Okay, I... I don't know why that one's not there, 'cause it's there in...
I think it depends on how you would, uh...
You know, we may, we may not have posted it yet, 'cause I know when we started the property tax, um, statements, I know we started back in twenty-two, when we needed to make sure the income was there, so it may not have been, we may not be to October of twenty-twenty-four yet, so that may be why it's not, 'cause it would show up, if, if there's anything in that account, it, it would show up, so that would be my educated guess, is that we, we don't have those posted.
Well, let's see how it may bubble to the surface as you're catching up this...
Yes, I guess that I hope to have everything, um, the, the goal was this month, but, um, you know, the, the rain and, and sandbags and things like that had other plans for me, so... But we're, we're, we're really close, I, I know I keep saying that, but we get closer every, every time, so I, uh... And we should be able to have some more checks and balances after I get everything in, that would, you know, make sure we, we're, we're solid and square. So, and I'm hoping, 'cause you guys should do your budget workshop in July, so I wanna be able to, you guys to have, if we need to amend this year's budget, so everything is going to be good for this current year budget and making next year's budget going forward.
I'm mostly asking the question because, because we normally would get our property taxes all in one lump sum.
October, November, December is when you get eighty-five percent of your property taxes.
So how we kind of accrue that and spend it, and being able to watch how our spend down goes over the course of the year is helpful for us. So I'll be curious to see how it gets booked in, so we'll, we'll punt on that and see what, how the system books it, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's the, that's the goal, that whole new enterprise, someone is serious.
Oh, you know, when I did upload that, so I did today, uh, yesterday and today, I was able to, um, start uploading some of the, um, access database to Tyler Tech, and, um...
He didn't like it?
I know, right? Well, he didn't like the first thing that I sent him, and he's like, can you look for something like this? And I'm like, you know, I've, I've got four files to choose from, I mean, here, this is what you've got, but, you know, we're, we're trying, and so, um, but we did start to upload to there, so they can start getting those, um, those data pulls for the utility side, and just sort of seeing where, where we're at. So we are, um, one step closer with that, and, and he, um, I, I don't, I didn't hear back from him after I uploaded that second batch, right? Yeah, so I think, um, we'll, we'll see what he, what he said, so...
So we have these two accounts at US Bank, where's the rest, our other, is it First Community, right?
Uh, yeah, our operating and our, our savings accounts are all at, uh, First Community. US Bank, I believe, are the ones that have to do with the loan for the drainage project, so it's one that the income...
Yeah, US Bank is a, our pass-through, it goes full circle, and it comes back to us somehow.
Okay, I was curious, 'cause it says we're having trouble obtaining access, so...
Well, it's just because we don't like, um, we don't have a local contact, like, you know, we come down here and at the bank, and it's easy, we change signatures, and so...
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, so, um, right now, I didn't have any access to that account, so I'm trying to establish that I'm, uh...
Who you say you are?
Yeah, yeah, and it's a nothing account, we don't, we don't do anything in it other than that forty-five thousand dollar payment for, um, the, the loan, and so it's, it's not, um, I don't think it's gonna change, or, you know, it's not a...
Any more questions for Rendee?
Thank you for the hard work for everybody, sir.
It's, it's a team effort, we're all, um, we're all seeing numbers by five o'clock and head swirling, but we're okay.
Those coffee machines are just going on stop all day.
Yes, yes, we drink a lot of coffee, a lot of energy drinks.
All right, number seven, um, mayor pro tem, discussion, consideration, possible action to appoint a mayor pro tem. Since we just went through election time, um, it is time to appoint a mayor pro tem, so it's up for discussion.
Calm down, not everybody's here at once.
Why are we fixing to start? Why?
Uh, I mean, since Ms. Gonzalez isn't here, you know, obviously. That's what happens.
Usually the way it happens.
Or we can nominate somebody else, we can, there's three other people here...
Or we can nominate somebody else, we can, there's three other people here.
No, I don't, I'm not involved, but I mean, do you want to? I mean, who wants to? Scott or Mike? Is there anybody that, I mean, do you not want to?
I'm happy to do it.
Remember, if I'm assassinated, you're in it.
So, and I'm fine as well.
And a, and a drought in town during a hurricane. You're good.
You're it. We runs to, was it Cabo for the freeze?
Yeah. Something like that.
I'm happy to have you continue, or if you're ready to.
If you're, it's all y'all's idea, so if you want, I'm happy to keep doing it.
I move that we nominate Scott Nelson to be air pros. So I do have, during further discussion part, I will have to say, like, the first time I got nominated, I wasn't even sitting down yet, because we did the swearing in, and I wasn't even around the table.
And you got.
Jerry nominated me, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's right, he was ready to run out the door. I remember that.
Yeah.
I do remember that. Okay, I have a motion on the table. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Scott Nelson, three years in a row. Right, and on, that's Liam this week.
Check rate.
All right, number eight, take-home vehicle, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve take-home vehicles for the following employees. And it's not for the mayor, please chief.
Yeah, you go first.
It's for, I know, I needed to read the whole thing. It's for a city administrator, and please argue. So, Chief and City Administrator, Al O'Leary.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Good evening.
Hello.
I asked Mrs. Gonzalez to add this to the agenda, because Sergeant Cisneros is, of course, you know, was promoted, and he also is the investigating officer for us in case of anything occurs, he needs to come over here. Currently, he's using his personal vehicle, but I want to be, if with your approval, assign him a take-home unit, which is a unit that he uses here all the time. Every officer is assigned a unit, by the way, but they all stay here. They don't take them home. But I want to do, have him to have a unit, because he's going to be on a 24-hour on-call status. We're going to alternate between him and I. I'm going to be one week, he's going to take the other week, and so forth. So he is going to be assigned or to respond to emergency situations. And those, those emergency situations might require emergency lights and sirens, so he's going to need a unit. I looked up on the, on the City of Palm Valley employee handbook, one of the requirements is that the employee residence must be within 25-mile radius of the City of Palm Valley. I looked up his address, and he is 23.8 miles.
So that was going to be my question to you, is how far away is he? Is he in Cameron County, is he in?
Here in Orange. He's 23 miles from his residence to here. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, he's in Brownsville, but he's at the outskirts of Brownsville. So he's 23.8 miles. And like I said, it does, he is going to be on 24-hour on-call basis, and required some equipment in there for investigations. So that is why I come asking for approval from the council.
And on his, when, when he's not here, when he's not on-call, he has a private vehicle that he can drive?
Correct.
Okay.
You're correct, but I would prefer him keep it, because if it's some reason I'm going to need us both here, then.
No, I understand, yeah, I agree.
Yes.
For, for fuel, is, do we have a city card that he uses to fuel that vehicle?
Yes, sir. Every unit is assigned a fuel card, so every unit has, has one, so we can keep track of.
Are there any insurance concerns if he's parking us at home? I'd say, I had a take-home car, I'm sure you had a take-home car at some point in your career, like, our policy was we had to park in the driveway or the garage, but park in the street, and that was kind of an insurance thing as much as anything.
Right, yes, no, he will not be parked in the street, I will, you know, relate to him, he needs to be parked, if he has a garage, in the garage or in the driveway. He's not going to have any weapons in the vehicle, so that, you know, I don't want him taking any weapons and leaving them in the vehicles, because.
Right.
You know, out there, people break the window, and there goes a weapon.
$500 to you in the window.
Yeah.
My, my take-home vehicles, all of my bad for drug scene vehicles, mark vehicles, other car vehicles, so.
Can we have any of them?
We have access.
They didn't look like, they weren't marked.
Yeah. It was like a Corvette.
No, nothing like that.
The Lamborghini.
S250 to a Volvo X6, you know, that was.
Yeah, it's funny, when a police department seizes a vehicle, the district attorney gets first pick, so they always pick the Corvettes and expensive vehicles, and we get the.
Fiat.
Exactly, so.
So is, we're not purchasing a new vehicle. This is a vehicle that he drives when he's here.
Yes, sir.
So the whole reason is that when he comes from Brownsville, it's not the gas, it's, it's so that he can, if there's an emergency, he can leave from Brownsville with his lights on and speed all the way.
Well, and speed, yes. We don't, we don't know, we don't have to speed.
Yeah.
We, we do that to give.
My only concerns are, just to address with the insurance company, make sure this particular vehicle, to the extent it needs to be, is designated as a take-home vehicle, and perhaps that it's used in a course and scope and not, you know, maybe go to the grocery store or something of that nature, because there's some issues that come up from a liability standpoint at that point. So as long as those are addressed and in some sort of policy.
What about miles on it? Like, so would he use it every day? So he's putting 40 miles, 46 miles on the car every day?
Yes, yes, he will be coming in every day, coming to work, going on. And as far as the, there is, it says here, a president employee to operate a vehicle between scheduled, oh, I'm sorry, from, to and from work only, no passengers are permitted, no family members or anything are permitted in the vehicle. It is just from work, from work to home, from home to work, that's it.
And work-related things, because if he needed, if, if you wanted to consolidate and have someone ride with him to a training, for example.
Correct.
That would be acceptable.
Yes, and sometimes also, he's had, he has to leave here, and he usually leaves here at around three o'clock, by the time he finishes his shift, goes to the district attorney's office, turn in cases, and then goes home. So he's still.
Performing his duties.
And DA's offices in Brownsville.
And then he, he would, he would fuel the vehicle with his fuel card?
Correct.
How old is this car?
It's a 21, so it's, it's, it's not too bad. You know roughly how many miles it has on it?
They're all pretty much at 114, 120,000 miles.
Okay, all around Palm Valley. I guess the only question is, would somebody review, making sure that the insurance, questions that you had as city attorney?
We already have take-home vehicle, right?
Yes.
And so the insurance carrier's already got noticed that we do that. So that's why I was specific that if, I don't know if it's a per-unit or per-fleet, and so the insurance agent needs to be advised, this is, these are the take-home vehicles, does it matter, or is it a fleet policy?
I know what TML, they didn't really care, is the fact that there were emergency vehicles with lights and sirens and a sticker, our radar was up just based on that.
Exactly.
They didn't care if it was used, what it was used for, just the fact that it was a police vehicle.
Yeah.
I think the only issues we had with TML was if it was a water department director that took it home, you know, I don't even think they made issue of that, they just wanted to know if it had lights on it.
Yeah, that's the whole point, it's a police vehicle.
Yeah, that was about it.
Different level of liability due to the nature of the vehicle. That's why I suggested.
If it was a water department, they had emergency lighting, they wanted to label it as an emergency vehicle.
It's really a. It's a, hey, insurance company.
Take the lights off.
We are going to do this, are we covered for this kind of situation? With their written response, yes, or you need this endorsement or whatever, but that would need to be addressed, so that if there is some sort of situation that occurs, that it's a covered claim.
Yeah, I can call them. And anytime we've had to, when we add a vehicle or remove a vehicle, they do not ever ask, is it a take-home vehicle? They don't ever have, never in my experience, TML, other insurances perhaps, but through TML, it's, it's just what vehicles, they ask the VIN number, they ask this, but it's never, you know, what is it used for? But I can call and confirm, I've just never had to designate if it was a take-home or a N-City.
They never ask until it's time to deny a claim.
Yeah, sure, yeah, that's true.
Yes.
Exactly. No, no, it can't hurt to ask, for sure.
Exactly.
Are we ready? Well, she's still, it's one, go ahead, Randy, your turn.
Well, we had just, yeah, there's two of them on there. There's, there was a truck that, is my understanding that, well, it wasn't actually being used, it's a 2008 F-150. And so one of the things that I learned during this last storm was when I had to come over here in the storm to help, I was in my personal vehicle, and it's just kind of a risk to come over, and I want, obviously want to be here to help and assist in any sort of a situation that we have. And it was brought to my attention that we do have a truck that wasn't being used by Public Works or the police, it's just, I don't know, I guess it was just sitting there. And so I had, was requesting about using that, so that way when I go to meetings, whether I'm going to work-related meetings, whether I'm coming here, or whether I have to come here on and off situation, that I would have the, the work unit to, to go from. There's times where we have to go to meetings all over the city for city management-type meetings, emergency management meeting, different things like that, that I do use my personal vehicle for, and gas and such. So that was where this request came from. So no, we're not purchasing another vehicle for this one. This one's a 2008, and I didn't have him check the mileage on it, but I'm sure. Why is it just sitting there? What do you mean it's just sitting there?
Actually, the administrator's vehicle.
It is?
Yeah. We had to fix it up for Mr. Ortiz, but he used it once or twice and then it was.
Oh.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think Public Works would use it if they needed, needed an extra truck, right? I mean, like, but it was, it wasn't in rotation, we're not taking anything away from Public Works or, you know, anybody to do this, it was a truck that was, kind of wouldn't know where it originated.
Are you ready now?
Well, the only problem with that is it's increased maintenance. It's an old truck. I mean, I don't know. I'm, I, I'm in favor of the, maybe the sergeant, but I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
So let me ask you, are you claiming mileage for those? So probably should be, right?
Yeah, if that, yeah, so if I, I could start claiming the money, I'm not, I'm not right now.
Mike sounds like he wants to make a motion. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. I would say for official business, it's better to use an official car over the long run than it is to deal with mileage. That's, at least as long as the car is functional, and, you know, we can always address the issue if it does, if we're having a maintenance, if it becomes a maintenance hassle, but I would recommend crossing that bridge when we get to it. But I, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the take-home vehicle for Police Sergeant Cisneros and City Administrator Gonzalez, consistent with our insurance policy.
Okay, have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion on the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
I, I don't think the city administrator should have one. They never have. But that's just me.
I have one, two, three ayes and one nay. Okay. All right, motion passes. Number nine, IT contract agreement renewal, consideration and possible action regarding the renewal of the IT support and service agreement between Palm Valley and VEAE Communication Services and/or approval for the city administrator to begin requests for qualifications for IT services. Okay, I asked Ms. Randy to put this on. Our new IT guy was very good, he started out well, and I believe he's got some other contracts that are kind of more important to him, and he's kind of put us on the back burners. That's what I'm hearing out there, I don't know if that's true, but being that I've seen so many emails and text messages and whatnot, it's just like getting blood out of a turtleneck, so.
To him, or he doesn't respond?
Sometimes he takes, they can tell you, they repeated emails, phone calls, and text messages, and sometimes they do show up, but then they don't finish, and then they take off again, and so we can continue, because it's up for renewal when?
This next month, I believe, is when it's.
We've been with this for a year.
Yeah.
And we're approaching, like I said back then, let me put, we'll test driving, if we like them, if we don't like them, we go back out for RFQs again.
And, but do we have some other people in mind?
Advertise it.
Oh.
Advertise, we'll do our RFQs, RFQs, and post it again, and see what we get.
This one has to be terminated, right?
Yes.
When is this?
When does it have to be terminated by, when does the contract end?
So it ends?
June 1st, 2024, it's a year contract, and termination, and automatically renewed each year upon a customer's request, so I guess we don't worry, there's no service, it doesn't have, it doesn't have a date certain, as far as when it, the communication needs occur from us to, you know, them, that it's not going to be continued, so now it'd be okay.
Is there an opportunity for a month-to-month, because the RFQ could take a little bit of time? So auto-renew, I get that, but do we have the opportunity or the ability within the contract?
Send them notice.
It would renew under like terms, that's what it says.
So it's either a year or none?
Yeah.
Well, we could end up in a donut hole, because today's the 20th of May. Yeah.
I know.
So that's not enough time to go out for, to advertise. That was one of my questions, because from what I could tell, we were paying him every month, or did we pay, we were paying monthly to him, correct?
Right.
And this invoice is for the full amount? Is he expecting to get paid in full?
Well, that was, that was the question that I had for you guys, because I didn't know if that was agreed upon, you know, somehow with the last contract, because we, we are paying monthly to, to him now, so I'm not sure why he billed it out this way.
I did do the arithmetic, and he's not charging anymore.
Right.
So he's charging the same price, but before we were paying monthly, and right now the invoice is paying all at once, so that was one of my questions that I had noted. So could you live with this person for another year? It's a longer question, I realize, but.
You know, it's, it's. About.
You could, but in terms of the contract, it's one, you know, terminate or whatever, you could propose, we'll live with him for six months, a year, or three months, a year, whatever that, that is an option.
And that gives us time to do the RFQ.
Three, six months, if he wants it all up, those are all terms that can be. Three, six months, if he wants it all up, those are all terms that can be. Really, if the council approves that, if that's possible, that's.
That may be a good thing to do, just maybe he doesn't.
I want to pay him in advance because we need him right now.
But, and maybe he, when he realizes, I mean, if he likes us as a customer, maybe he doesn't care. But that if we're amending it to a six-month or month-to-month, then he'll step up his game. Not, then that gives us time to find some deal.
If he wants a date certain, if you did four more months, that would put us to the end of our fiscal year. So you could tell him, we're prepared to do four months and that will put us on our fiscal year schedule.
Exactly.
And then if we decide we want to do an RFP, we don't have to have our, you know, be under the gun.
And quite a lot, we can do an RFP every year and he can reapply and we weren't, we wouldn't, we can say it's in the natural course of, you know, any contracts that we have that come up for renewal can go through the RF, you know, process and so. I don't have high hopes for him. You know, we, we've had some pretty good meetings about, you know, what we need and, and, you know, I've gotten a lot of empty promises and a lot of unresolved tickets that are out there. And I read his contract, you know, and there's a lot that we are going to supposed to do for him, but not so any.
I don't think there's a mandate on how many days we have to do RFQs.
I, I don't.
I don't recall it being.
Well, no, because it has to be published and then it, it's just a published notice that, that, so it would be the.
Seven days or something?
Yeah.
And we can set whether it's 20 days, 25 days.
Yeah, it's just a matter of how long we want to give anybody to respond. Right.
So I really liked the idea of four months, put him to the end of the fiscal year. That, and, and we put out an RFQ next week, basically, and that gives us time.
Can he comply?
Absolutely.
Well, then that makes it non, because what I'm worried about is I don't want, he might step up his game, you know, and it, but I don't want to end up in a, in a hostage situation where they're, they're.
We've been there, yeah.
And I don't think, um, he, he doesn't have any passwords or anything that, that the chief and I don't have. So you guys won't be in the same situation you were the last time, other than he still has quite a few, I would say at least six outstanding tickets that, that needs to be completed, you know.
Are they big items?
Yeah. Yeah, we are, it's the cameras and.
Cameras and a plug plus, I don't know what he did or did he, something, something that we lost some video that he submitted. We called him, we went to her up, finally closed up, well, we can't find it.
Well, I think the worst-case scenario is he says, I'm not interested, and poof, on June 1st. And then we've got to, to, you know, Band-Aid that situation while we go out with an RFQ in the meantime and we pick up the pace.
We won't be, we, we would still be able to function. I mean, we don't have much IT support right now. So, you know, we would be functioning about the same that we're doing if he were to do that, so.
My, my hunch is that he'll go, okay, for four months. If he doesn't, then we have to be prepared to deal with that. And if he asks why four months, we'd say, well, we're concerned about these tickets and we'd like to get that done. We feel a lot better about hiring you again for another full year if all of these other items caught up. I don't think that's anything that's unreasonable.
Gives him a chance. If he doesn't want it, then. It gives him four extra months to do a good job if he wants, if he wants to stay here. But if he doesn't, then he can move on.
So would we table it pending her following up with that? How would we do that?
How are we all on board? Make a motion.
Would you rather have a motion?
We need to have RFQs, I mean.
No, but I mean, because his contract's up for renewal, so should we make a motion for four months?
Propose, yes, propose to them.
Yeah, there you go.
Short-term renewal, but certain terms of renewal, exactly.
Jason, are you willing to, you'll look at that and make sure we're not getting screwed?
I'll look at it.
I'll, I'll copy him on the, on the correspondence and then if they've been back, any agreement, I would have him look at.
I move that we, that the city administrator respond to VEAE Communication Services and propose a four-month contract through the end of fiscal year, ending September 30, 2025.
Have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, number 10.
It takes a little bit of heat up here.
Archer Business Systems contract renewal. Consideration and possible action regarding the renewal of the copier agreement between Palm Valley and Archer Business System, Inc. Communication Services. Randy?
So this is an agreement that's, it's a five-year agreement. We're coming up at the end of the agreement. The first time that Palm Valley signed it was in 2020. The original agreement was for $129 a month. The new increased amount is $149 a month. The, the staff has no problems or issues with the copier or the service they provide. So our recommendation is to approve. There's, unless you guys know something, we don't, but like I said, they come, they come out when we have a problem. They provide us with the toner and copier that we need and, like I said, we have no issues with them, so.
And this includes the toner, the everything, the actual machine itself is part of that rental or whatever?
Yeah, it's, um, the print, the scanning, the, um, I think we pay separate, do we pay separate for the toner? Or it comes with it, I think, I think it.
Well, we're paying per, per copy, so I would imagine we're part of it.
Yeah, with all parts, labor and supplies, like toner and drug. It excludes paper. But yeah, so it does include the toner. Yeah.
Well, let's make a motion.
All right, and a motion.
Okay, I move that we renew Archer Business Systems' contract.
Okay, have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Carry on, Archer Business Systems. Number 11, Parks and Recreation Board. Consideration, possible appointment of board members on the Parks and Recreation Board. Randy?
So as you guys are all aware, we had some resignations on the Parks and Recreation Board. And just for myself, I went and looked up the original Parks and Recreation ordinance just so we were all on the same page about what's currently required by our, our ordinance. I attached it in your packet. This board is to consist of seven members. Right now, I think we're at two.
That might be an old ordinance.
It, it is. I was thinking about that as we looked at it. We.
Reduced it to five, I think.
Right, and that was right after I started on this council. And that's when we also decided that we were going to be appointing, each of us would appoint someone.
Exactly.
Yeah. So who's?
So it would have to be in the minutes from May.
So the ones that are out right now, it's going to be Sylvia Rivera, America Gonzalez and Sandra.
Oh, sorry.
Or, is it Gonzalez?
No, Alessandra, I think.
Three.
Sandra.
Sandra.
I am so sorry. So those are three openings. Now, who appointed those specific people?
So I, I appointed Sylvia.
Okay.
She was mine.
So then you're.
On the, yeah. I have not had an appointment.
Yeah, and you, I think Sandra. Sandra. Because I, I appointed Perla.
Right.
And Sandra, but her husband, I was struck.
Okay, and then the other one was, uh, America was actually holding.
She was already on there.
Who appointed Bill Elmer? Was that yours?
That was, that was Glue's appointment.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, he did. And he's still on, but I don't know how active. He's very good. He's the one, he's come in and we, he came in and talked to us already about the Memorial Day celebration. He was going to be, both meetings that we tried to have, he confirmed that he was going to be there. So he, he's still active, yes, ma'am.
So right now we have Bill. Perla. And those are the only two.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's understandable, America resigning because she's on the city council now, so.
Yeah, I thought that was going to be tough. So Daisy Bonda is someone, she was a cute old girl that came up. She lives in Palm Valley and she's wanting to get involved. You know, that, I think, is important that you get people that are willing to be involved.
For sure.
And meet. I mean, if they're having trouble even meeting. So, and I personally would recommend Perla at, you know, as the leader of it because she is very organized and very responsible. And she's tech-savvy as far as texting and all that, if, if they're looking. Do they vote themselves for it? How did Sylvia get that spot?
I think within the committee they voted, yeah.
Okay.
The way that it's supposed to work, and I don't have it in front of me, but.
I believe the way it's supposed to work as far as the appointment of Parks and Rec, uh, members is that when councilperson comes on, then that, that particular councilperson makes an appointment. That's their appointment. And that happens, so obviously that happens twice. You can reappoint who you have. And then if you are on the city council and you haven't appointed yet, then that's going to be a, a missing one. So they, they can appoint, so reappoint the one fellow that comes all the time, Bill, or, or someone else. So America would have someone, Mike will have someone, you guys can reappoint as appropriate.
Right, yeah, my plan was to reappoint Sylvia.
And, and if, if councilman or baker's appointment is still on, then you're still okay. But if you needed to replace she or he, then you could.
Well, and the point is that, I mean, like, here we are, Memorial Day.
Sometimes. Remind me, who, who was Mike's appointment? You're saying that she's not able to continue to serve?
Sandra.
Sandra. So Sandra, and so Sylvia announced her intention to resign?
Yeah, she's.
Okay, and Sandra did, and then America's resigning because she's on city council, so we have three, three spaces.
We just want to make sure we get people that communicate. There was a big, huge communication problem. Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I don't have somebody that I'm prepared to appoint yet. So I would, I mean, the Memorial Day event is already planned. I've, I've got the flyer for it, which I need to probably change a couple of the names on it. The next big thing is 4th of July, so we probably need, we need somebody in place by the June, before the June meeting. I'm not trying to volunteer myself for more stuff, but if I don't have an appointee, it would fall to me, right?
Well, all of the council is.
We show up anyway.
So how much of a headache would it be if I fill in that spot that Sylvia was holding until such time that I can appoint somebody, I find somebody that's willing and able to, to do it?
Well, and that Daisy Bonda who came up here, she's, she's willing.
I'd actually.
Where you have, theoretically, you would have me to have someone to, to be the head of the Parks and Recs over there. It's supposed to be a vote between five. If you don't have the five, you obviously, you guys step in, yeah, act sort of like a, sort of like a mirror vote tip.
Do they have scheduled meetings? Because that was another issue is.
Randy's going to put together a schedule for that to make sure that we follow.
As far as their appointment goes, I think you would just name your appointment. I don't know what it requires the council people because it's, that's, it's near autonomy, that's about.
Right.
Or whatever, so I would think you just ask that it be added perhaps to the consent agenda or something like that, it would be.
So.
It does not need the council approval, it's just your appointment.
So let's say I find somebody by next Monday or maybe at the Memorial Day thing, I'm like, hey, you look like you might be wanting to do this. Do I just send Randy an email and we're good?
Yes, yes, alert the city administrator and then we'll, as I said, we'll take a week and vote in their higher.
Positions, yeah, okay. Great.
So, question, Mr. Mandu, when, when we.
So I could, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just had a question with what you said. So when we schedule a Parks and Rec meeting, the, the council is to attend as well?
The council is entitled to attend.
They can.
They're not required to attend.
Okay, so we should put them.
For core purposes and whatnot.
Okay, so do they help count as a forum?
No. I don't, ex officio? Yes.
Yeah.
So when we are scheduling, we need to just let you guys know when it is so you can come if you so choose.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I, I think there was a disconnect there. Some of the council members maybe passed and maybe so present, I don't remember, but addressed that, that they wanted to participate in those to see how and why and what the funds allocated over there, how they were being spent.
Well, I'm prepared to take a week anyway to maybe find someone and then we could do that in the interim and then put it on the. Are you saying that we could let, let her know to get started on 4th of July thing and then we put it on consent to confirm? Something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll work on that.
I still need to put an appointee also because mine had to quit a long time ago.
Well, that's right.
Yes.
Well, I think we go with what we got because Memorial Day is in. Yeah, the nice thing is the, the agenda's done for that day. I'll, I'll speak there, those available, unless you want to do it.
And, America said, Mr. Nelson, America did say she would.
Early in the morning, yes, okay.
So, um, we're, we should be good for Memorial.
Okay. But I do want to say that all, all the events have been really good. So this existing Parks and Rec group, they really did a good job, you know, I agree. The, the 4th of July parade was, was really, people, I heard lots of good comments about it. The lighting of the palms, people were very happy with that. So I, I appreciate the work that the, that the Parks and Rec Board did and continues to do for those that are staying on it. So I think we're, it's a good trajectory. I think it's, it's just a, it's a, it's a good program, so I appreciate it.
Any more discussion on that? I need a motion.
I don't know what the motion would be if we're appointing.
Set it aside until we get our appointees.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to table the Parks and Rec appointees until such time as we have made them.
Okay, have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's been tabled, set aside. All right, number 12, executive session. We don't have anything for executive session, Randy?
No, no, sir.
And it's number 14. We're going to skip all the way down to 14, monthly reports. Hey, police.
All right, so this, this time I included a nice little package there.
Yeah.
Very detailed. On the citation. And the reason I included this one because I wanted to see what trusted driver provides for us. As you can see, on the violation counts, 96 violations of speeding, which is extremely high. Now, 96 violations does not say that we gave 96 tickets or citations.
Which page are you on?
Sorry?
Which page are you on?
Well, the first one, violation.
In the corner, it says 96, real little.
Oh.
This, this?
The, the colorful chart, the colorful chart, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
The little patchwork, yeah.
And 96 doesn't mean we gave 96 tickets. It could have been warnings as well, but 96 contacts is what I call it. You know, and, and the driver license came in at 13. So there's a lot of people out there driving with no driver license. So we're out there, the, I have the officers out there monitoring the traffic, trying to slow them down, especially in the mornings because of school. because of school buses that are, and I've gotten a lot of school buses, a lot of people running in school buses.
Really?
They don't even.
Is it mostly here on Stewart Place?
Yes, right.
That's the majority? You've got Newark under control.
Newark is really under control. It even, this even shows a map of all, you know, places where most of the activity.
So this is a cool program, my only request is make it a little bit bigger if we can.
Well, like this, I mean, I don't, do they come out to say?
No, not that.
So that one I agree, but like the.
Like the little teeny rining.
Yeah, the patchwork protein there is just hard to see, so if you can create landscape, maybe. Connie could change the orientation to landscape, and that would make a difference.
Yeah.
Thanks. Is that Dr. Rowe?
And this is really good, because it gives us a breakdown on what days the most enforcement.
Does this break it down by hour?
What time, yes. Breaks it down by hour, seven AM, eight AM were the highest, and then twelve PM, one PM, two PM. Four PM, also very high. Also by race, and also by gender.
I wanna see the gender, for example.
Fifty-eight percent men.
Man.
It's not women drivers.
I told my daughter the boys are down.
Ema came in close second, forty-two percent. So it's, it's a, I can give you detailed reports like this if you wish, or I can just cut it down to just a number of citations, but I wanted to show you what kind of reports we can get from Trusted Driver.
Well, I had a question, because the citation, if you just look to this last page here, the citation number jumped dramatically to a hundred and thirty during the month of April, which is a lot higher than normal.
Okay.
It's the very last page. It just says City of Palm Valley Municipal Court.
Oh, I don't have that.
That's the court report.
That's the court report.
That's the court report.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't.
So was there?
So I think that number that you're looking at, Mr. Gorgeous, is what showed up for court, not, let me see, hold on, it might not be the.
I'm just trying to match up why there was such a jump relative to what you guys are doing, unless.
Unless the dates that were wrong, I don't know what dates were those wrong, because I ran it from the fifteenth last month to.
This report includes.
So March said it had thirty-seven citations, and in April, it said it had a hundred and thirty citations, according to the court.
That just sounded like a lot, but if I look at the.
Okay, say again, say it again.
So the court, the report from Municipal Court that Ms. Noda runs for us, March said thirty-seven, and April says a hundred and thirty. But that, that doesn't even sound right with our March numbers, so I'm gonna have to look and see what it means by citations, if that's. Citations issued, citations that showed up for court, because I know we had a really big day in April, that they had, how many did we have on that docket that day with?
Fifty-seven?
Yeah, so maybe it was citations issued, I don't, I don't.
But we didn't start with Trusted Driver till April.
Oh, well, maybe that's the.
Maybe it's related.
So March was different, yes.
Gotcha, okay.
March was still writing handwritten.
Yeah, so now we can go faster, so we write more.
I'll just say, I mean, looking at the sheet with the violation dates, and there's roughly thirty names per sheet, that's, that's a hundred and thirty people. So, I'm just curious, were we picking up enforcement that much?
We, so, I mean, that's what it shows, again, I don't have the courts report.
Yeah, now, some of these have, the name shows up multiple times, but I bet it. That could be part of it, every single citation versus each person.
So, so somebody was cited for multiple things, this is going to count in separate counts, whereas.
No license.
So I think that's all the citations, but it's not a hundred and thirty people.
Yeah.
It's still a good chunk of people, because a lot of them are just, show up once, but there are several who show up three or four times.
So Chief, let me answer this, so we've got ninety-six for speeding, and then thirteen for motor driver license, and six for failure or something.
Insurance, how much is for insurance?
So if, does this, do we have, do you have a total count for all the squares on this?
I don't have a total count here, but I can get it, yes.
So that might answer the question too, for what it was. I like this, I think this, I'm superficial, so this helps me out a lot, so thank you for that.
What is insurance?
Appropriate comments.
What little square is insurance?
The failure to, I think it's the.
Well, there's a bunch of, so failed to. So there's a couple of failures.
Oh, failed like number five?
Oh, it says failed to S.
That's what I'm hearing.
There's two that say failed to S.
Filtered stop.
With glasses.
Filtered U.
Well, what I can do in the next report, I can give you a breakdown of what exactly each one of those are.
That'd be helpful, and I think changing the orientation, as Michael suggested, is good.
And I'll give, I'll give you a breakdown on each one.
So are you happy with this choice?
Yes, it's very fast, it's very accurate, and I know we've had several people pay on, you know, right away, because it's easier for them to just click pay now, and I even had one lady say, don't leave yet, hold on, I wanna make sure I pay it correctly. So she paid it right there.
What is, what is failure to maintain financial responsibility?
That's not an issue.
No issue.
Okay.
Which, which square is that?
It's on this detail list, it showed up several times, failure to maintain financial responsibility.
Y'all don't have the capability to look that up, because I know DPS does.
Yes, yes, we can run a license plate, we can run a license plate that'll show on there whether they have it or don't have it.
But not on this software.
None of the software, no. Also, I've been speaking with the people in Trusted Driver, they're, hopefully, by next, next month, they'll include another tile in there for ordinance violations. So we'll have a breakdown, and those are just gonna be ordinances, so we'll have a breakdown on also.
Trash.
Trucking the trash, progress, all that good stuff. So we'll have a breakdown.
So I'm gonna ask you, I like this level for the next month or two, and maybe you revisit it and say.
We don't need that level, but.
No problem.
Thank you. Is, is the machine for people to come in?
It's not here yet, I'll call to see when he's gonna bring it, but it's not here yet, but they do, they are gonna get us one, yes. Was that right? Give him a ticket.
I didn't say I wouldn't test drive it. Talk about being voluntold.
So I think some of the difference is, before, if we, when we gave a warning, we didn't give a written warning necessarily, right? Not always?
Not always, they were instructed that they had to, and one, and two, if they, if they were, they had to manually enter it, so they might not have entered them.
So that's, I'm counting over here, and now they can give a warning really simple, so I think it's counting more of the warnings than, there's thirty, on the court report, there's at least thirty-six on here that are warnings, so I'm thinking that may have been why, some of the increases, we're able to see more of the warnings than we were seeing before. I'm trying to figure out what the jump is. I got you.
Any questions, Vivian? Are you providing the fire report?
No, I was just.
Fire report?
No.
Wow.
Chicken.
Beat there.
It's just, I, we get this report, I can't find it because of all.
Saw it somewhere.
So we, yes, we get, we got our quarter, our second quarter report for 2025 from the Harlingen Fire Department. We had a whopping five calls in the second quarter. There was one for smoke scare, order of smoke, one for a medical assist, two for a smoke, their smoke detector was activated, and then one, a dispatch, and it was canceled and out. So that was, that was our report.
So does this?
They're calling 911, I mean, who are they calling, or is it hardwired to Fire Department?
The dispatch was probably through an alarm that gets hardwired and called, so as soon as the alarm goes off, it dispatches them if they don't cancel it within however many seconds, or ADT or something like that. And it must, they must have gotten quite aways, I know that there's a lag time in, from even just when the security company will, you know, dispatch out, so you can put in your little code, or you can say that it's canceled, so they obviously.
And their number doesn't match ours, so this one that the chief puts together.
I was gonna say, I need to contact them to see how they're being dispatched. There's been at least three times that we've received a fire from going there and like, they've never got calls.
Right.
They follow and find out that somebody called because of a little smoke or whatever, like those smoke ones do.
Yeah, we don't always.
It's gonna be an alarm system, yeah, usually an alarm company will call them directly.
Right, go straight to anyone.
They should be letting you know their.
Courtesy, they should notify us, yeah.
This is why I want to talk to them as courtesy, this is that us know, so we can get there as well, and we can get it faster. We even hope it, there's been a couple of times when maybe you see a fire from going there, and we have one of the neighbors going.
Because that's through.
Just Butler, are you one of these fire alarm calls?
But I can't climb the ladder anymore to reach my car on, so I go down there and ask them if they can change the battery.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And they'll come and change the battery, so they have to bring the car truck.
For sure, yeah, yeah.
Oh, they'll break it, they'll do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do have a program for smoke alarms.
Well, that's, that might even be worth adding to the stonebreaker thing, like, hey, around, because they suggest to change it twice a year, maybe we initiate.
They changed mine once a year.
Okay. Yeah, right. But it's, I mean, it's a good collaboration between fire and police. Right, yeah, they can't do it with one guy, they need, yeah, a couple of folks.
Because of the, if they get a call.
Right, correct, yeah, I totally get that. I don't know if I need to define elderly, because my wife doesn't let me to climb a ladder anymore.
Now you can call yourself and call.
Yeah, call, medic, heal yourself.
Awesome. Okay, Municipal Court, I think we kinda covered Municipal Court during the chief's, also Water Department, Jim, everything good?
Yeah, everything good, sir, just an update on our investigation on the material. Still waiting for our blowers. They told me they were gonna come in about a week ago, and I still haven't received it. We still have little issues there at the sewer plant where our mortars are still going out, we've been replacing them too. I'm trying to replace some of the valves that are around the city that I've been telling y'all, that they're old, and we try to close them, and they don't shut at all, so I'm trying to install at least one, probably one every three months if I can, and with the money that I have, we need to start more in facing our valves, because they're old. Every time we have a leak, I mean, to close out of water, it's kinda hard, we have to do them hot, and that's a lot of manpower, and everybody has to be, you know, underwater sometimes.
Dangerous, yeah.
Sometimes it's, you know, I try to pick up our water pressure to at least fifty, but it doesn't happen, because I'm scared it's gonna bust the line. We install new line, valves, I can help the city, like, I can isolate this area and get it done, and then keep up with the fifty psi water, but right now, man, if I put anything over forty-eight, my line will pop. And to isolate that area, I mean, I gotta shut.
Half the city out.
Or the whole entire city. But yeah, I'm still working on some, some items there at the water plant. But, you know, whatever I have, you know, I hope I can use it. And it's up to us, you know, if we have the money or not.
Yeah, we're gonna have to sit down and look at the budget.
He's putting together already a plan or a proposal that'll tell how many valves he needs, he's working with engineers that has the math that he's gonna be able to, right, that's what you were telling me, you can tell him that.
I'm gonna work with Mr. Rodriguez and see if he can help me out a little bit on sea work and.
To see how many we need, and then roughly how much each one is gonna cost, so we can kinda come up with a number for perhaps a capital project for the next budget session, to prove that he can just plan that out and, you know, just map it all out. So he's preparing that for you guys as soon as possible, so we have that number.
Yes.
Yesterday, you guys worked all day trying to.
Yeah, we tried to put one yesterday, we just put a band-aid again, and then, you know, let's wait, let's move on to the next valve and see if we can shut that area, and then if I can do that, if I can shut that area, I mean, it won't take, you know, more than about thirty minutes to install one. I mean, it just couldn't pace, but if I don't have, you know, the water shut down, it's kinda hard. I mean, I had three pumps yesterday, and I still couldn't, so all we did is just put a band-aid again.
Are these valves, like?
They're forty years old.
Right, but are they, so that leads me to really wonder, or can we buy or replace one off the shelf, or do we have to have them custom-made? Because that's, now you're talking to me in time too.
Just off the shelf, I buy them off the.
No, they're updated, yeah, they're updated, newer models.
Okay. What was the hole at the end of El Camino yesterday? There was some digging going on?
Yeah, trying to replace a new valve.
That's the one you?
Yes.
Was successful or not?
No, no, water can be shut up, so I gotta plan another, say, go further out. On this side, I could shut it down, and no water would come in, but it's on the south side that that water's coming in, so I had to find a valve that works, I mean, an eight-inch valve, it takes twenty-four turns. We did twenty-five completely, so there has to be a hole or just rot it out.
But the other option he has is that to do it is to shut everybody's water off, and, you know, do it instead of for tops late at night, but that coordination may be crucial, resonant, know that, you know, from eleven PM to one AM, we're going to shut the water off, but, you know, he needs to have a plan for that, but he said he was willing to do that if on some of these, we can't get them to.
I done it before, we come in about one o'clock in the morning, and then just shut the city, and then, no, like I said, it doesn't take much, it just couldn't pace, but if that valve doesn't close, I mean, we can't, we can't do it.
True.
Is there one area that's worse than the others, or?
See, on the south side, it's all, on the south side is okay, we already installed valves. I think I have like seven valves new there, that I can isolate areas, but on this side, it's gonna be the worst part, the north side. Say on Tangerine, there's a ten-inch line, I don't think, I hope, I don't never have a leak there, but I don't, I don't know what I'm, knocking wood, but I would have to shut the entire city to do that.
Yeah, it's becoming challenging, and it's, the goal is to replace all the current valves that are old. An example was the one that was on the end of La Cana, that one, actually, they were doing a repair, and the stem broke on off, and so to get the thing dug and replaced to let water flow is gonna take some time, it happened on Friday.
Right, right.
And then, so nobody's working the weekend, long story short, we had to barricade the street, we tapped into Ephraim's water, ran it across the street and connected it to the fire hydrant to feed water to that area, otherwise we would have had no water for four days, five days.
Wow.
Yeah.
So then they tore up my neighbor's driveway and put a whole new valve in there, and that was about six, seven thousand.
Right, that's correct, yes, sir.
So that gives you an idea of how much it costs to replace each valve.
About six thousand?
That's just to dig the hole and do the valve, that doesn't include that we had to redo their driveway. That doesn't include the, we had to redo their driveway back to original condition and pave the street to where it looked back like normal. That was an additional cost, but I would say, I would venture to say eight, nine valves each valve.
Wow.
It's, it's gonna get worse and worse, man, we don't do anything about it.
Yeah, no, we need to. And what about the manholes?
Manholes, we're still working.
That's.
We're still finding some bad ones, so still working on that and looking into it.
So that will be coming up during budget workshop, we'll have more discussions on that because we do need to.
Address that.
Every city has aging infrastructure, but this is more of a, a must have because we get in situations like that where half my neighborhood was without water. And boy, were they angry.
Yes.
Like, I, I don't have water either, you know, come on. Yeah, but Efrain didn't even know what was going on, but they were like, it's got a pipe and yeah.
I think he was out of town though. I think he was out of town.
If he did.
He never came out.
Yeah, I don't think he even noticed what happened.
So I, I was.
We borrowed his, we didn't, we made sure it was on the city side, but we connected there and then connected to the fire hydrant and then they made the line.
So you're talking about valves on the mains.
The mains.
And how many are there? Massimeno's.
Massimeno's just right now, I'm at 17.
That's around.
Just some of the areas.
Okay.
And, and it's. Might have to put more so we can isolate smaller groups because it makes it easier to do repairs.
Yeah, right.
But.
Once we get control of it, sir, then we can start working on like the two inch valves, like on the close legs, you know, those two, you know, they're old, they're, they're real fragile, I mean, we touch them and they don't even come up anymore. So that's, and once we get it isolated, we can replace them with new valves. They'll make it a lot easier, a lot easier. And I can raise up the pressure, believe me.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.